I'd like to call to order the June 5th DEA Board, the Dilapidated and Abandoned Enforcement Agency meeting to order. Jordan, let's start with the roll call.
David Kahl.
Here.
Sheriff Eggleton.
Here.
Drew Pack.
Here.
Destiny Newcomb.
Here.
Rob Benadder.
Here.
David Turley.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Welcome Mr. Turley to the board. He's come on board to replace Mr. Smoot, who has retired. Now, the next thing on the agenda is action on the April 3rd meeting minutes, which you all have on your iPads. It's file number two.
Make a motion, we have further minutes as opposed to.
I'll second the motion.
With a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Okay, are there any citizen concerns relative to anything that is not on the agenda today? All comments should be directed to the board. Please request to be recognized by the chairman of the agency prior to public comments. This is a public hearing to be held to receive comments and is not a forum for debate. Is there anyone here who wants to speak about anything not on the agenda? Hearing none, we will move to the next item on the agenda, which is election of officers. Mr. Smoot, again, as I mentioned earlier, has retired, so he's no longer on the board. Mr. Turley has taken his place as the fire expert. What's your exact title?
Fire service director.
Fire service director, very good. Okay, so we need to make nomination for a president and a vice president. So would anyone like to make a motion?
Mr. Turley, it's always been one of the things, hire guys as president. Do you know?
No.
Make a motion for I nominate Mr. Turley to be the president of this board. Second that motion?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Sorry, Mr. Turley. So, he is nominated, we take a vote, right Larry? Okay, so let's take a vote for Mr. Turley as president of the DEA Board. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like the ayes have it?
Congratulations, Mr. President.
Thank you.
But that is respective, actually. I'm a police official.
I think it was better that way.
Would you counsel, would you agree? We all represent a different type of things. I got one.
Okay, so now that we have a president, take nominations for the vice president?
I make a nomination, standing vice president David Kahl, be the continuous vice president.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Shall we take a vote on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, looks like that carries, I'll continue on as vice president. All right, thanks everybody. All right, next item is our unfinished business, and we can look at file number three on our iPads and follow along as Jordan reads the information relative to each of these cases.
Okay, our first item agenda is DEA case 2025-02 located at 558 Sunny Brook Drive in Hurricane. The landowner does plan to attend the meeting and address the board today. He called just before the meeting and said he would be running 30 minutes late. Are you guys agreeable to waiting to discuss this at the end to give him a chance to come?
Just table it for the time being.
Okay.
Make that a motion.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion to table 2025-02 until the property owner can be here. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, we will table that until the gentleman arrives. By the way, relative to that, he should be bringing more current photographs for us to look at than those you see on your iPad. I have some photographs that I took there, I believe it was Monday, which we can go over at that time.
Okay, item number two is DEA case 2024-04 located at 525 Joyce Road in Scott Depot. This landowner was present at our last meeting on April 3rd and was granted 60 days at her husband's request to complete the side porch and remove the accumulated debris from the property. Photos submitted by the landowner this week show that they have completed the porch and made significant improvements to the property. If you agree, I think this property is no longer in violation of the dilapidated ordinance.
I'll make a motion to drop this case. I second that.
All right, with a motion and a second to dismiss this case, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Okay. So then we'll do new business. Item number one with new business is DEA case 2025-05. This property is located at 7859 Taze Valley Road in Scott Depot. Our complaint was received on March 28th and the landowner was notified by certified mail. The photos taken May 22nd document the condition of the property. The landowner stated that he has been out there working since then. I have not received a written plan for the cleanup, but he did submit an application to obtain a development permit for the mobile home that's sitting on the property, and he has stated intent to complete the setup and clean the property to be rented in the near future. A more recent visit to the property documented progress made toward compliance, and Mr. Thomas, our landowner, is here to address the board today.
Come up, come up.
Does this property butt up against Rocky?
This is at the end of Rocky Steph where it meets Taze Valley Road.
So, in the past, when it was owned by?
I'm sorry, ma'am.
When it was owned by the previous owner?
Yes.
They would not tie onto public septic, so there is a septic tank there that needs pump-puckered and backfilled?
Not to my knowledge, there's sewer in the property.
Yeah, they never hooked up to public sewer.
Oh, I'm not aware of that, yeah.
But I can show you exactly where the tank is.
That probably sounds right, yeah. I bought this off of an attorney that bought it for a tax sale. I bought this land and another piece, and the other piece, y'all has already found him $100 a day on that, so that does not surprise me.
So, real quick, could you state your name and address for the record?
Yes, it's Donald Thomas Jr., it's 892 Morrison Fork Road, Scott Depot, West Virginia.
Thank you.
What are you gonna do there?
I'm wanting to put possibly a couple of mobile homes there, and what I've done, I've owned, I bought the property a year ago, and the day that I bought the property, it had a burn house on it, it was all vegetated over, right there at the intersection, it was a six-by-15 school bus shelter, I was totally unaware that was even there from the brush and the trees and the debris. I started cleaning that up, hauled the house out there, I started clearing the hillside off, I burned about 20 dump truck loads of brush, and last year we went into the fire season due to the drought, and they totally banned burning, and I had one pile of brush left, and it had to carry over, and I still couldn't get it burnt because it was wet, so I took a dump truck and hauled it out there Memorial Day. But in the meantime, I have got a permit from y'all to fill the land in, and the permit's good for two years, to fill the land in, and that's what I've been doing, and part of the complaint was that there was concrete, center block, and dirt on the land. Well, the concrete and center block is better filled than dirt, and the concrete is still there if you've got the new pictures. The concrete I'm saving to riff the creek when I'm done. The kids' shelter, I tore down the bus shelter, I put it on Taze Valley roadside, the bank was washing in, and there wasn't an inch of dirt on the edge of the road, so I'm trying to shore up the road, you know, the state won't do nothing until it becomes a major issue. But I've got the permit from y'all for filling the dirt in, also got a permit from y'all to put another access into the property with a culvert, and along with that, I had to jump through hoops, took me three months to get a permit from the state as well, so now I've got permit from y'all to put the culvert in and one from the state as well, and it's just a timeframe, you know. Like I said, my main permit for filling the dirt in, the pipe will probably put in within the next month or so, but filling the dirt in, you know, I can't say how quickly I can do this. The mobile home currently does not belong to me, it was brought in there with a bad axle, and the guy that, and it's kind of a unique situation, the guy that brought it in there and is storing it there for a short time is also the guy that's getting me a lot of my dirt and concrete, so I'm trying not to force him to move it out of there, and then I was told that I need to pull a permit to set the mobile home, which I offered to, and they won't let me, y'all won't let me pull the permit, I'm a general contractor, but I am also a landowner, but I've been told that I can't pull a permit to set the mobile home because it's not going to be my residence. Well, and then the guy that's setting it there, he feels that he's not pulling a permit because he's taking it out there, the mobile home's not going to be set up there. But in the current thing, I've let him know what's going on, and me and him has got a deal worked out, if I put a metal roof on the home he's got, I believe he's going to let me have the mobile home, but that is not written in stone, and I've not even went to his house yet and measured the roof up. But still, yet, if I do obtain the mobile home, I'm still not ready to set it yet because I've got to do some more filling there.
The permit issue, you have to think, that's a separate issue relative to what we're talking about?
I'm sorry.
The permit issue you described, that's a separate issue relative to the?
Well, I was asked that, someone in the office asked me to do that, but while I was in there.
This property, since I've been the sheriff and prior to, we had problems with the health. They were running sewer into it, they were doing, I mean, it was just a lot of problems. So, what we want, we get a lot of complaints because Rocky Steph, very good homes, we take care of the homes.
Absolutely, absolutely.
As soon as you turn up Rocky Steph, this is the first thing you see.
Always, always.
So, we ask that you get, we understand time, it takes time.
Yeah.
But the mobile, how many mobile homes you gonna put there?
Two to four, I really ain't even measured the lot up yet.
So, anything that is four or more, four or more, classify it as a mobile home park?
Well, I may just go with two, like I said, I ain't even measured the lot up, I don't even know how much the lot will hold legally, I know there's a state code that's got to be so far apart and all that.
Right. I think it's fire code, am I right?
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, I'm aware of that, I just hadn't checked into it, but I ain't got that far along yet, you know, I got to get the land filled up first, and then if I can obtain the one from the guy, I'm going to go ahead and set it, and then I'll go from there. The neighbor lady that lives beside of me, it's a brother and sister that owns the other two mobile homes.
No, it's not.
She put in a little bit smaller culvert, and waters bypassed her culvert and going in her yard, well. Bless her heart, the part of her problem is, is when they done all the work up there on the interstate, they had a pipe in the creek, and a flood came in, and I know this because I drove through there at the same time Rocky Steph was flooded, and they ran in her equipment real quick and removed the small pipe that they had in her for temporary, and washed a lot of debris down her in front of her pipe. The state's telling her she's not allowed to clean the creek out, and being the good neighbor that I am, I'm going to clean the creek out, and like I said, I'm a general contractor, and I do know that you can't do that legally. The last one I cleaned out, y'all's probably may have been aware of and heard about it, I had to go through the DNR, and the one neighbor, I got seven or eight neighbors where I live, 22 police officers was called by the time I cleaned the creek out, but I am going to do that for her, just because it helps everything there.
I think some of those permits to the state permits are lighting up on that stuff, because we all know the port rage here, the reason we're doing a lot of these floodings is because we don't clean our creeks out.
Yeah.
That has a problem, and I think some of that's been fixed. Thank you, pardon.
Yeah, yeah.
What kind of timeframe we talking about cleaning things up? Not building, just getting it to where we don't get a call?
Well, here's, I'm going to be honest with you, my permit's good for two years, but the other piece of land that I own up Rocky Steph there, I just set a mobile home on it.
Is that on the left side?
Yeah, be on the left side going up, there was a double-wide, burnt double-wide there, and that's where the lawyer was being fined $100 a day on, and I bought that unaware, but the guy in behind there, I give permission to go through me, he's put a double-wide in, and he's having dirt issues, and he's a young family with kids, and I told him that I'd dig his dirt out, just trying to come down on his double-wide and haul it down there to my land, but my goal is, is probably going to be the end of summer, like I said, I'm a general contractor, and I got to make money when I can, and all these hailstorms, I'm covered up right now.
If this board would give you 90 days, could you make a lot of progress within 90 days?
I can put a pipe in, you know, but I can't really go, I'm going to be honest, I swear it straight up honest, I can't take tandem dump trucks up there and remove the dirt he needs done. I can do it in three or four days, but right now, my hands are kind of tied, but I can put a pipe in and keep it looking good and keep the grass mowed.
Can I make a motion to table this for 90 days, and we can rediscuss at that point in time?
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion to table for 90 days and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, table and rediscuss in 90 days.
No, it never was. Okay.
So, you have 90 days, so I got to take all the work and come back down here, or is it just something y'all can do?
You'll get, if things are getting done, then this young lady over here will do a drive-by and look at it, if things are getting done, we'll just do away with the complaint.
Okay.
If things aren't getting done, then you'll come back, okay?
Yeah, I've got one neighbor's got under a painting, blowed out some under an empty mobile home, and they won't do nothing about it, you know, and it looks like a mess.
The call.
Yeah, I already have, and I was told that they couldn't do nothing with it.
Well, there are different things that we can and can't do, it's just, it's.
Yeah, but, you know, it's.
This board shares your frustration.
Oh, yeah, yeah, all right, thank you. I remember when you sang Nitro Cheese.
I have some cheeseburger.
Yeah, you remember me?
I do, I do, when I seen you, I was like, I haven't ever.
Yes.
I wish I still was.
I should have re-sent it.
I don't know. Thank you, sir.
I'll repeat this.
Thank you, sir.
Relative to this, relative to the case we just discussed, I was just out there Monday and took some photographs, and he has, he didn't really mention it, but he has cleared a lot of the brush piles off the property that you see on your iPads, a lot of that has been cleaned up, there's still a lot of busted up concrete on the property, but the photographs you see on your iPad with, it looks a little better, it looks a little better within the last few weeks, he has made some progress.
And as you all know, that pipe was for years, and then they were pumping sewage into the creek there for a while.
And they had a tap in the yard, like, I don't know what else you could ask for, you know what I mean?
Okay.
Because this was the Yates property at one time, and then it was Moles, wasn't it?
Yeah, that was a drug house.
Okay, if we would like to motion to bring DEA case 2025-02 off the table, our landowner is here.
I'll motion to bring case 2025-02 off the table.
All right, a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, we will now hear DEA case 2025-02, and the property owner is here.
Yep.
Okay, come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Jason Cummings, 558 Sunny Brook.
Come on up to the microphone, so she can hear you.
Jason Cummings, 558 Sunny Brook Drive. I got some pictures for you there this morning, I've gotten more stuff out of the way, since you're all over there.
I can comment that I was out there Monday, and there, he was in the process of clearing the structure that was out back. I got some more. Okay, you cleared in front of the garage as well. So, the images that you see on your iPad presentation for 2025-02, again, these are, those are a couple of weeks old, I have some hard copies here I can pass around that shows that he has dismantled the structure that was out back.
So, at our April 3rd meeting, he was granted 60 days to either remove or complete the wooden structure and to remove the accumulated debris from the property, so that's what was actually asked of him.
You still have your phone?
Yeah.
Were those photos taken today, yesterday?
Both way.
This is the side of the house, this is this side of the house.
Trying to get a grill, trying to get headlights, trying to get a front fender.
No, the thing is, you're just a car.
To do what?
To drive.
To do what? You can't put it on the road like that.
Well, I bet you're on everything.
There's an issue by state law, that's your violation, state law right there, that is unregistered.
It's registered, I'll take that.
A sticker on it.
Special sticker.
It's an unregistered, uninspected vehicle parked in the weeds, that's what we call a bannock. So, I'm just going to give you, I'm not going to give you anymore time. That's got to go. That's got to be moved to somewhere where you're, where it's not supposed to be. That's.
It's been a while, I've been working on it, you know, you're developing it, and I said I don't pay taxes on it.
You got a license?
No, there's a license, but I didn't, I don't work on it.
And you're not paying taxes on it, you got to pay.
I pay taxes, but I don't get much of the tax.
Okay, you're not paying taxes on that, so everyone watches this thing, okay? This board has bent over backwards, bent over backwards, and your neighbors are up to here.
A neighborhood.
With all that stuff. You do a little bit just to keep it going, I'm tired of seeing you, you're tired of coming in here, right? You're tired of coming in here. Clean it up, clean it up, just, you know, you can sit here and tell us all day long, and I don't mean to be rude, but I'm just fed up really with all of it, clean it up, get that car out of there, I don't care what you do, put it in the garage, put it in the garage and we'll never see it, if it's in the garage, then it's not a bannock, okay?
So, if I get a sticker on the plate, though, it's licensed, then it's good?
You can't get a sticker on it.
The license plate sticker?
You can't get a sticker on it, it can't be roadworthy, until you put a sticker on that windshield, it's not roadworthy, and that thing is a long ways from being roadworthy. So, I'm just giving you advice, put it in the garage, okay?
We need to cut back on the reaccumulation of everything that happens so quickly, because I get calls on the Salt Lake side many times a week from the area, and it's not just one person, it's multiple people, and even people that just drop by, and it'll be fine for a couple of days and then it starts to reaccumulate, so we got to hold back on the reaccumulation of stuff, and that's the biggest thing that I hear a lot, at least on the Salt Lake side.
So, do we have a motion relative to this case?
What was our last, what was our last thing we presented, giving time?
He had 60 days to remove the structure and the debris.
Has the 60 days expired?
Yes.
So, we're talking about the moving the disabled vehicle, that's something you want to see done.
It's got to be.
Got to be done immediately, get it in the garage. Can you move that? Do you have a place to move that? Can you get that in the garage?
Give me a few days, I'll have it out of there, I'll take it to my mom and dad's.
Where's mom and dad?
Out Savine, Savine Road, I'll take it up there and stick it in your garage.
The grits and stuff, the debris there, that's pretty easy to move.
Is the front of the garage clean?
Yeah. Did you see the telephone photographs?
Yeah.
Yes, chef, yes, show them the front of the garage, please.
A motion at this date would either be to allow more time for further progress or to forward to the county commission for further action.
I make a motion, give me 30 days to complete his projects.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, would anybody like to second that?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, and the 30 days, that is the car being moved and all the rest of the debris be gone.
30 days the minimum we can give?
Well, 30 days, we gave him six before, so, yeah, so, with that being said, they drive by, you know, come back.
Okay, okay.
And we don't want to see you back.
I hear you, I hear you.
So, but 30 days, you get all that stuff done, we'll take pictures, we'll dismiss this case, and you go live your life and keep your place.
Best case scenario would be not to wait till day 29, you know.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, okay.
All right, thank you.
So, we have a motion on the floor, do we have a second? We had a second, okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Okay, we'll continue to our next agenda item under new business. Number two is DEA case 2025-06. This is Tax Map 214, parcel 47.3 on Rocky Steph Road. The complaint was received on April 3rd regarding an abandoned mobile home and dilapidated structure and some debris on the property. The landowner is deceased, the first notice that was sent via certified mail was received by his brother, who came to the office and explained that he is not responsible for that property and does not own it. So, I got with probate and got a list of heirs, and a second notice has been sent via certified mail to his heir, which is local, but the green card has not been received in the office yet, so we cannot yet make any choices or decisions on this unless you guys want to discuss, happen to know these people, or have any clue on how to get ahold of them.
Have they signed the letter yet?
No, no, the last I tracked it, it's being returned because it was not received.
They are local, as in Putnam County?
Yeah.
Will they deliver something and post it on their speaking's place?
Process server.
You mean to hear on one of these vehicles, or?
The heir.
Yeah, the heir lives at Granada Circle in Hurricane.
Who are the heirs?
Dennis Cantor Berry is the administrator, and that's his son, and then there are four more heirs, the daughters that live in Salt Lake City, Utah.
Oh, boy.
So, I sent one to the local.
I mean, we're going to have to.
Granada Circle's probably. I'll get with you, you know, because I think the house is on my cases too.
Granada Circle, yeah, okay, so, motion to table until notice.
You sent it to Mr. Cantor Berry, we're waiting for it to get back.
Yes, last time I checked the tracking for the certified letter, it had not been picked up, they didn't receive it at the house, they didn't pick it up.
We can't do anything.
And it's on the way back, so.
I just wanted to see if we had some suggestions on how to serve.
I think you got to table for 30 days till the next meeting to see if it was, if it hasn't been picked up, then I don't think.
Yeah.
Right.
Do we want a motion to table until notice can be given? Yeah. Do we want a motion to table until notice can be given, so we don't put it back on the agenda?
So we have a motion, we have a motion. Do we have a second on that? Oh, sorry.
What other means of delivery do we have? Can we go to the person on Granada Circle or whatever, maybe post something on the door?
They, so I can't, so the ordinance states that I do have to notify them with a letter that details the complaint, the process, when the meeting is.
Which method of delivery of the letter? Can be hand delivered?
I can have it processed, served, and in the past, we have hired externally to have them served at a residence. So that is possible.
Process service is one of those things that's, this is just, can you share if any of the, I don't like our service of process. It's not, it's not her thing. She gets into something, it's very difficult. A process service will know what to get into sometimes.
Yeah.
So you have to be careful. I have no problem with the process service in the county for the sheriff's office doing it, but we just gotta limit that. We're over. That process needs to happen periodically. If this is one of those cases.
So would it, would it be fair to say, like someone said, that the 30 days, if you'd be willing to do the, do that exercise at the end of 30 days?
We just hired a new process server.
Sure, yes. And I understood that. And we don't generally move to process serve on these, you know, if you can't notify the landowner, there is no case to discuss, so.
And this is gonna be one of those ones, as Larry's sitting there nodding his head too, that we've dealt with before. This has been an airship forever, especially if somebody has a Utah, getting signatures is ridiculous. And I don't know how much land is involved here, but it's.
Yeah, it's a small little piece of land. It had gone to tax sale and then it was.
With the water taxes and mineral sector.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so did we, we had a motion and a second?
So we do have a motion to table until notice is served, and we need a second.
And a second? We had a second? Okay. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, ayes have it.
Okay. Item number three is day of case 2025-07, located at 64 Showen Hill Road in Bancroft. This landowner has been notified via certified mail. He contacted staff and reported that he began cleanup on April 26th. He is unable to submit a written timeline for the cleanup. He's elderly without access to resources for that. So he asked that his statement to staff be accepted and said he would clean up before today's meeting. On May 8th, he contacted staff again and said the neighbor, who is also the complainant, had called the police and had them removed from the property during the cleanup. And so the photo is taken on May 22nd. Note, some visible progress, you can see around back, they cleared out a lot of that bamboo and stuff, but they were forced to leave, unfortunately.
Why was he forced? My, my people made him leave?
Apparently, there is a property line dispute, which I've explained to the landowner, can only be solved with a survey. And so the landowner that lives below them and complained about this feels like he's enroaching on their property during his cleanup and called the police and had them removed. So I'm not sure.
During the cleanup, which he, which he was.
Yes, which he initiated the complaint and then called the cops and had the guy removed. You can see around the front, they did take care of some of the debris and the knocked over table and stuff that was out there, and they gave it some effort, but then they were made to leave. So I'm not, I told him just to hold on and wait until we discuss.
The lady files a complaint and then has, has him removed for trying to clean up?
Yes.
And I've also seen, received a complaint on this property and found no evidence that they had a wastewater issue whatsoever, but that porch is completely rotted. Like, that porch is not safe at all.
No, it's, it's very visible, here from the photographs.
But I closed my case out because I found no evidence of raw sewage anywhere.
Yeah.
When we say elderly, what do we, what do we, if you say 60, you don't get one?
No. Of course, I didn't ask the man for his age, but he did come into the office and appeared to be near 80. I mean, he's elderly. He does not get around well and was going to have some obvious issues trying to clean up, and I just assured him that we would give him the due time as long as there was some effort. But given that the complainant is the very person that called and had them removed, I'm not sure how much more he should, other than in the.
Make a motion, we take this.
Okay.
You want to table it for a specific? Indefinitely, okay. We have a motion to table indefinitely?
If the gentleman, just with the discussion, the gentleman gets to it and gets some cooperation, do it, reduce to his elderly condition, and lack of cooperation, not like.
Yeah. And I'll discuss the porch with him specifically and see if, in the near future, he can make some progress on, on that one thing.
If he's making.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so we have a, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
I'll check with Asher Darren down there in Bancroft.
That would be, that's, that's what we're looking for.
Yeah, they may, I mean, they may be able to look for some, this men's class.
That's great idea.
So then, we'll go to item number four, which is day of case 2025-08 at 67 Stewart Circle. This is a previous day of case that was cleaned up and closed out. A new complaint was received April 18th regarding the debris and a falling retaining wall. The complainant attached photos of the wall to the complaint is falling over onto their property. The certified letter was sent but was not claimed and is also being returned to the office. So I assume the property owner knows what the letter is regarding, because he previously did. It's a P O box that it gets delivered to, and he has previously received our letters with the last time this house was.
Was it a refusal when it's coming back, or did he just sign?
On the UPS website, it just says it was not picked up and is being returned. Or USPS, sorry.
I would, I would ask our engineer to look at that picture itself, and I'm not sure that it's south of the wall.
Yeah, yeah. Some of us, some of the tenants of the ordinance are, any condition is unsafe, dangerous, and dilapidated structure, which that wall that is falling over is obviously a dilapidated structure. One might argue a health hazard, so.
I mean, honestly, I mean, playing underneath that, the wall falls down there. And that will significantly impact the neighboring property when it falls down.
Make a motion, move this to the county, to the commission?
Yeah, I second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second to move to the county commission. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, ayes have it. I agree.
Okay. So then, item number five is day of case 2025-09. This one is located at 48 Songburn Lane in Nitro. This complaint was received April 18th regarding bagged trash in the yard spilling onto the roadway and neighboring property. I know the Putnam County Solid Waste Authority has been actively pursuing this case as well. A certified letter was sent but was not claimed and is being returned to the office as well.
Have they been cited for littering?
Yeah, littering, and then we were going to issue an open dump ticket, but we just hadn't gotten that far. Because they were, we just weren't getting a response from anything. And they never showed up to get a ticket either, the little ticket. So.
This isn't in the city limits of Nitro?
It is?
No, it's ours.
It's not, I have a question.
No, this is right across the interstate bridge there. So if you're going towards cross lanes, that, the bridge that goes over top of interstate, look right there.
Is this rental property?
I do not know. It, it appears that the people that live there probably own the property from what my research, you know, on their deed and stuff is. And I know, I did also receive concerns that there might be grandchildren that visit the property on a regular basis.
People living here?
Yeah. They live there.
Yeah, there are. And we've spoken to the, Mike and myself have spoken to the lady that lives there, and I mean, she says that they own the property, but they were, this has been over seven months ago now. But it got to the point now that they're, they just avoid it all. They won't come to the door, or they won't.
Did you say there were children that lived there?
There, I have been told there are grandchildren that visit the property.
There are children's toys and stuff like that on the nicer side of the house.
Where they don't throw their trash. Yeah.
And there's also animal concern, not so healthy looking animals.
Yeah. And the, the home structure itself is a little dilapidated as well.
Massive tree, you can, you can see there too, that the massive, there's a massive tree that fell onto the house. It didn't do any structural damage, and that was from the property owner, which she spoke to us as well, that it was just, I mean, puncture the roof. But at that point, it wasn't this bad, and she said that they were working on it, getting it better. So that's, when Jordan called me, I was like, take it on. And I'll listen to that, so.
Well, the trash issue is one, a health issue, safety issue, open dump, litter, I mean, there's a plethora of things there, but how do we get it cleaned up? What, what is their level of garbage?
And until they're notified by this board, there isn't anything that, like a next step that can be taken.
They have not been.
No.
We'll, we'll, we will serve them, send that over to the office, we'll, we'll do a handover.
Okay.
Because that, that needs addressed. That's been, that's been there for a while.
Yeah.
There's been multiple, like a couple houses, Mike and myself went out there that we've left the property and like gotten almost to town, and we see her walking back from town to the house. I, they travel and feed her, which she does. But I've never, we've never been to the house.
Well, with the free dump days and the free, that thing going on, there's no excuse to that. There's, we could.
Yeah, if they cooperate, it can be done. Yeah.
We have a lot of, a lot of resources that won't cost them a dime.
And I don't know if this is true or not, but do you remember Circle Drive? I heard some of the people that dispersed from there went here.
I was told the same thing.
They're very close.
So, yeah, they're super close.
I, I heard the same thing, but from the neighbor, but I had, I didn't recognize the woman from our interactions that I, that me and Mike spoke to.
So as far as this board is concerned, we, we can't, until they're served, we can't make any motion here on this.
So I will send the letter over to the process server, as the sheriff suggested, and we'll have it served that way. Do we want to motion to table until the service can be?
I'll motion to table day of case 2025-09 until we can get paperwork served by the sheriff.
I second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it.
Okay. We'll go to item number six, day of case 2025-10, located at 483 Daniel Boone Trail in Hurricane. This complaint was received concerning overgrown vegetation and dilapidated mobile homes. Photos taken May 12th document the condition of the property. A certified letter was sent. Delivery was attempted, but there is no one at the address to receive it. It says it would be on the USPS website that as of May 30th, it would be sent back to the office. I have not received it. I guess they left notice at the house to let them know that it would be at the post office, but it appears to be unoccupied, and I don't have another mailing address for this landowner. Their taxes are paid, and this is the address listed on their tax ticket for mailing as well. So I don't know if they come by and check the mailbox, but they, oh, let me grab it.
There's an electrical meter there. And that was out there.
Douglas Davis.
One unsecured window.
Is the automobile, is that, is that car from the area shop there, is that actually there or not?
That vehicle was not there when I visited.
Have we been getting a complaint for squatters minutes over here or anything?
Not aware of it. You sure?
Did we find out who, who's the president, legal owner?
It's Douglas Davis.
Douglas Davis? Address that he gives is 483?
Yeah. That's on his tax ticket for his mailing address, and they're paid. They're current.
I think if you get with the assessor and, and a tax office run that name, if he owns any other problems, maybe we can serve him.
Okay.
I know it take a little legwork there, but I think it's fair, and or Gary's office there, they, we could find him. Because we know he ain't living there.
Okay.
Would we like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, table this until we find the guy. Good circle.
Second the notion?
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Let's have it.
Okay. Item number seven is day of case 2025-11, located at 545 Morrison Fork Road in Scott Depot. This complaint was received regarding a dilapidated house. The photos were taken May 20th to document the condition of the property, and a certified letter has been sent, but it has not yet been delivered. I don't have the receipt, so there has not been notice given. That one was just recently sent, so we'll give it some time to see if they get their letter. The condition of that structure is severely dilapidated.
It fits all our, all our check marks there.
Checks out the boxes.
Yep.
Sure we're looking at, Austin.
It, it was weird before it started falling apart, yes. It's awkward.
But you, we haven't got it returned?
No, we're just waiting to see if that one gets picked up.
Make a motion, table that for 30 days?
Second the notion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. And then, that concludes our agenda items. We'll have a staff report item that, just to discuss the new door hangers being provided by the sheriff's office. Sheriff?
All right, I appreciate that. One of the things when I came to sheriff's, got on this board that I didn't know, was the formal notification was the only way we could notify residents of their problems with their property. And I always thought that was just a bit much, that we had to formalize something to, to inform somebody of something they may not even be aware of. So, four years later, I've finally got something going here. This, this I put together, and the reason, the reason I put the sheriff on there, there's two reasons. One, I said on this board, well, actually three. Two, I am tasked with ordinances of the county, also has the sheriff. And three, I put the sheriff's thing on there because it grabs your attention. If we, sometimes if we just put the day of board on there, they throw it away. Not knowing that the sheriff is part of the day. So that's, that's the reason for that. And I, and I just believe that so many people just need an informal, hey, do something with it. They don't even know, you know? A lot of people believe, you know, and, and I believe people ought to be able to live, to live the way they want to, but I have no doubt about that. But there are some safety issues, and there are some issues where people just need to take responsibility, and that's all this is. And when people tell me, well, I can't do this, can't do that, well, this board has been on the backlist, the county has been on the backlist to find resources. So that's why on the back of this, back of this, we have free resources for trash days with everybody that sits on this board here, that was, that our agencies are out there to help you, not just to, just to tell you how to live or that you're fine. So the county just want to make sure. And this is one of those things, so when we go out here and anybody on this board or any agency within the county can pass these out. I went out yesterday and passed a few of them out of places that we already know. And it's just to say, hey, let's, let's, here's your resources, you can do it. It's an informal, there's no complaint been filed. We can take it to the next level, you know, before we get it to the next year. And I, I just thought it was something, something positive. Of course, I've got some blowback, which I always do, trying to, trying to do the right thing, don't always make you, make you do the right thing. But, and I just thought it was a good idea, we come up with it. We come up with it, I, I paid, I paid for it out of sheriff's discretionary fund, which just comes out of weapons, that, that doesn't cost the people any money, doesn't cost the county any money, it's just one of those things, it's just people. With that being said, I, I think if we, as a board, can pass these out, one, the only negative to it is I think it makes your job harder, because you're gonna get the phone calls.
Yeah.
But we may not have to go out and serve these people all the time either. So, and I open it up for any questions or comments.
Um, comment on this, just from experience, from our little control door tags, um, on your next round, site code that these refer to, um, just because we didn't do that, and I just don't know what calls and complaints about where to come from or where's this at, um, that's taken. I love it. I was pumped to see your video.
I did put a video out, uh, on, on our sheriff's Facebook and my personal Facebook to do this. I gotta say, a lot of positives, a lot of positives.
Yeah.
There's always, always, it's not the sheriff under overreaches, they know that I'm a very hands-off kind of person, it comes to protect your rights, it's my job to protect your rights, not to violate them, and, but, but it's also my job to make people accountable for their inactions, as well as their actions.
As far as, uh, our office is concerned, um, if someone calls up and say, hey, I've had this flyer placed on my door, um, we'll say, well, you know, refer to the resources on the back. You know, this is a wake-up call.
Right.
You know, do what you can to rectify the situation before this becomes a DA complaint. And, uh, if you do that, it'll alleviate a potential problem.
Keep the resources for any time, and your neighbor may need some help or something, so give, give it to your neighbor and move on, and hopefully we'll never hear from you again, you know? And, uh, I think it just makes Putnam County better, you know? Like I said on my video, I love Putnam County. I'm born and raised there, you know, and, and I live on a farm out here. I, I, I take care of my property. It's very, uh, very irritating to see people just, and, and it's not a matter of, if you're old, or if you're, if you're poor, my mama used to say, poor don't make you trash. You know, we, our, we didn't have any money, we mowed our grass, we took care of ourselves. So, that's just it, I just wanted to, and if you need help, we'll try to find the resources, you know? We said right here, just talk about it, uh, uh, gentlemen, we get churches involved, get boys, you know, get youth involved, something like that, you know? Takes a community to take care of us, and we're just trying to find the resources.
It'd be, uh, everyone's job to, to sort of, I mean, people called, we've had a few calls in the last few days, people, you know, extremely excited, agitated, and kind of freaked